Twenty ninth, two thousand twenty one, Ministerino Joint City Council and Site and Architectural Commission Special Meeting. Before this meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few house rules to assist council members, commissioners, staff and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. Council members and commissioners, your microphone is live, so please keep your microphones on mute until you wish to speak. For tonight's meeting, we are using Zoom to host the joint special meeting. At the bottom of the Zoom page, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a council member or commissioner speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the mayor and enabled to speak to the council and commission. To comment under oral communication or on any agenda item, you are allowed three minutes to speak per agenda item. Emails limited to three hundred and fifty words can also this can also be submitted to the city clerk and it will be read into the record. The word limit is set to here to the typical three minute time allowance. Only attendees using using application can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants calling in from the telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback or public comment. Lastly, because we're all not, we are not all in the same room, although it's a possibility will be taken by.
All right, thank you. And roll call, please.
Councilmember Mauer.
Present.
Councilmember Meekich.
Present.
Councilmember Turner. Mayor Petronalahi. Mayor Lutal.
Present.
Commissioner Harrington.
Here.
Commissioner Zeidler.
Here.
Commissioner Asherma.
Here.
Commissioner Boucher.
Booker here.
You're sorry, and Commissioner White.
Here.
And we have a form.
Thank you very much. Moving now to the section on oral communications. If we have any members of the public wishing to speak this evening, we will go ahead and queue you up and hear from you at the outset. We may or may not have an opportunity to get back to members of the public after the staff report and presentation. So we'd like to go through the members of the public wishing to speak. Actually, sorry, let's take this in proper order here. Backup. Oral communications are any matters that are not on the agenda tonight. Do we have any members of the public who are wishing to speak about any matters to this body? That is not on the agenda tonight. Otherwise, please lower your hand. If you want to speak about the SB nine and the zoning issues, then we will have an opportunity to speak to that after we have the introduction to the staff report. So I see a hand up, Emir Hadid. Did you wish to be recognized on something other than the study session today or just to participate in the study session?
Just the study session.
Okay, great. We'll come back to you then when we get to that. Okay, seeing no other hands, Mr. Hadid, if it's convenient, if you can put your hand down, perfect. Okay, communications, Ms. Radcliffe, have we received any written communications that had not made it into the packet?
No, we haven't. We have not.
So moving now to new business. This is a study session regarding Senate Bill nine requiring ministerial approval of up to two residential units and or a lot split on residential single family zoning districts and discussion regarding potential code revisions. So do we have a staff report on this? After which we will open up to questions by panelists and then public comment, and then we'll return it for general discussion.
So hello, good evening. I am Diana Perkins, the city planner, and I do have the staff report for tonight. The Senate Bill nine was signed into law by Governor Newsom on September sixteenth, two thousand twenty one, and will be effective on January first, two thousand twenty two. The most significant component of this bill is that it requires ministerial approval of up to two housing units per lot and ministerial approval of a one-time two-lot subdivision of any single-family zoned lot needing specific requirements in the statute. The written staff report includes details of the development activities allowed by the state legislation, a list of properties where this legislation is not applicable, and limitations that are placed on the city. Although this new lawsuit receives varying local regulations regarding subdivisions and development standards, the SB nine does preserve some authority for local agencies to enact regulations through the adoption of new objective standards. Staff has developed several options of items that can be included in our local ordinance to guide the development of projects submitted under the SB nine standards. These include clarification of setbacks, limitation on building height in certain locations, options for allowable building size, parcel configuration, and parcel frontage. These options are provided for discussion purposes at tonight's meeting. Based on the feedback and direction provided by the council and the commissioners tonight, staff will provide a recommendation and draft ordinances to the Site and Architectural Commission at their meeting on December seventh, I'm sorry, eighth, as well as to the city council on December twenty first for a final decision. This concludes the staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Panelists and council members, any questions? You can either raise your Zoom hand or wave at us. All right, looks like no questions at the outset. There we go. Ms. Sharma.
Figure out how to raise my hand here. Sorry, so one question on the the report that you just read out. So does this only apply if there is going to be a house that's going to either have like two houses on that same lot, or if it's going to be divided? So does it not apply to like a traditional single-family, you know, projects if they don't have an ADU?
So there is a little discussion, I guess, that's still happening regarding the SB nine legislation and whether it would apply to a single-family home project. Perhaps the city attorney can weigh in, but if if it does, if the legal opinions are that the legislation would apply to a single-family home, that one house would be subject to the objective standards that are implemented for any SB nine project.
So the basic, the basic function of the SB nine statute is it creates two separate avenues for development projects. The first one is the urban lot split provision that allows any sort of existing single-family zoned lot to be split into two lots as long as it meets specific requirements. That is separate than the provision that allows for up to two dwelling units to be constructed in any single-family zoned lot via a ministerial approval process. Because the statute is phrased up to two, in theory, someone could apply to build just one, you know, under that ministerial approval process, but it would still be subject to whatever objective zoning requirements that you have. And the statute is very clear that you can invoke that up to two provision if you have an existing single-family residence on the structure. So you could, if you have a house, invoke that provision to build a second unit, you know, on your existing zone lot. Those two provisions can be combined, so you can have an urban lot split and then create up to two units on each of these split lots. However, the city is allowed to cap that and prohibit additional accessory dwelling units or junior accessory dwelling units so that the city can ensure that no more than four units are ultimately created on any subdivided parcel. So.
Thank you. That 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 clarifies a lot. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Ms. Turner, you have your hand up next.
I, yes, I do, and and I wanted to follow up with what our attorney had said about. And I want to clarify this, you know, I have been at several meetings about SB nine with with the local control group, Cali, with the city's association. And in many instances, many of the lawyers coming in misinterpret the law. They say, yes, you can have up to six or seven or eight units per lot. So what I'd like to see is, you know, clarification, and we ought to be clear in our stand, in our guidelines and standards that we have total possible units is four and no more than four units. So if we could make that very clear, so it's not subject to any misinterpretation, I sure would appreciate that. Thank you.
You, and I have a follow-up question for Mr. Rudin and Ms. Perkins as well, whoever can better answer it. Does this really allow, in theory, that a person with a single-family residence on a piece of property right now existing could come to the city and say they want to lot split and tear down the existing house and then start building the new units, the the two or three or four units that they might choose to put on the lot? And and that that entire process is, at this point, ministerial? Is that correct?
I'll I'll start with that. Under certain requirements, the short answer would be yes. The state law does allow ministerial approval of up to two units. And addition additionally to to that would be the accessory dwelling unit and a junior accessory dwelling unit, and those would be approved ministerially. In regards to the demolition of an existing structure, the state law would prohibit demolition of an existing structure if it has been used for a rental property in the last three years.
Okay. And the other thing that I'm questioning and want to clarify right at the outset is this minimum eight hundred square foot business. And so how does it work that, again, my hypothetical example, someone shows up and says, I've been living in my house, I want to tear it down, I want a lot split, and then I want to build two units on each lot. With the eight hundred foot minimum, is it theoretically possible that we would say that given an urban lot split, followed by two units of construction, unless there was an existing home there, we could limit each of those units to eight hundred square feet? Or is that not possible?
Um, yes, so this, um, the state legislation mandates that we allow a minimum of eight hundred and eight hundred square feet for each of the two units that may be built under under this SB nine regulations. With the urban lot split, the state legislation does allow the local jurisdiction to prohibit an accessory dwelling unit and a junior accessory dwelling unit on the urban lot split projects. So that is.
Yeah, now, following up on that, on the urban lot split, does, do we have to allow one unit that is our regular zoning size unit? And then another unit of up to eight hundred square feet? Or could it theoretically be possible that we downsize the, what I refer to as the main unit? And simply say, if it's an urban lot split, all you get is two eight hundred square foot units, unless there's an existing unit there?
Yes, that is possible. So and you could enact that sort of restriction in one of two ways. First, with respect to the urban lot split provision, the urban lot split provision basically creates a ministerial approval of a subdivision, but it doesn't approve any permits for building or development. So it's similar to approval of, you know, a subdivision map that results in a legal lot that can be built on. However, as part of that subdivision process, the city is allowed to enact objectives, you know, zoning and subdivision standards about what can be lit built upon a lot that is lot split. Keeping in mind that one does not have to invoke both provisions of SB nine, one doesn't have to make use of the urban lot split provision and the two units on one lot provision. You know, you would need to enact whatever restrictions you wanted in mind. So, for example, you could have an urban lot split provision that says, well, if you make use of the urban lot split provision, you can only build on it units up to this certain size. Or you can allow for a ministerial approval of an urban lot split and then restrict anything that's built on that split lot up to a certain size limit or or allow that development to proceed as if it was a normal lot and say, allow people to go to site development or to the Site and Architecture Commission and get permits if they didn't want to be subject to that eight hundred or thousand or fifteen hundred foot restriction, whatever size the city ultimately wants to enact. So you you can make it a, a, you know, absolute size limit for those, and that would likely discourage the use of urban lot split provisions unless people are okay with that size limitation. Or you could, you know, allow for some sort of size limitation and allow for, you know, on the two units on one lot provision and not have a side limitation on the urban lot split. So those, there there are a handful of options for the council to consider. Ultimately, I think one of the big issues for discussion this evening will be what sort of size limits that the city council and the Site and Architecture Commission feel are appropriate for these types of projects, you know, that would be subject to ministerial approval.
Right, thanks. I think that helps clear this up. It sounds like we're going to need a matrix along the way. Ms. Sharma, you've got your hand up.
So I have, I had another question. So with the lot split provision, is there a way for the city to tie that or for us to tie that to a requirement that there will be development on it? And the reason I ask that is that what what is going to prevent somebody from splitting that lot and then coming back a year later and then again asking to split a second lot? You know, and then keep doing that unless we tie it that, okay, you now need to build, you know, like a dwelling unit on that on that property, and then that kind of stops that that cycle. So maybe it's an academic question, but I'm still curious on how how that will be taken care of.
So with respect to the urban lot split provision, because it's a ministerial approval, i.e. you shall grant, it would be difficult to tie it to requirements to construct something, particularly within a specific timeframe. I don't think the law envisions that. But because that, because the law is written to only allow for a one-time lot split, nobody could come back using the ministerial approval process to seek further subdivision, if that makes sense. They would have to go through the discretionary subdivision process if they wanted to divide that lot further.
So as long as if it has been subject to this ministerial process once, then for the rest of we, I don't know if there's a time limit or any, you know, time limitation on this. Basically, that same, the the one of those subdivided lots cannot come back and use that ministerial process again.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
At least is, at least as the way the law is currently written.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, and actually, following up on that, and I think Ms. Sharma's question, earlier question, is there any way to say that someone who shows up and requests the lot split has to complete the subdivision and the development within some sort of a time period? Or could people show up, request the lot split, and then just sit on it for forever? The way things are drafted currently, or can we put in a restriction on that, that things need to move along in a timely fashion so it gets built out, it's going to be submitted?
So with respect to the two units on a single subdivision or on a single residential parcel provision of SB nine, the one that allows you to build two units on an existing lot, that is something the city can require construction timelines, and it's not atypical. You know, whenever you prove building permits that you have to show progress on, you know, trying to find finalize completion of construction. Now, with respect to subdivisions, just because they approve a parcel map, which gets reported against the property, that is the project being approved. So what you approved is the actual splitting of the lot into a parcel that can be sold separately. That is, that is all the parcel map and the urban lot split does by itself. So.
Yeah, that that leads to a question is, could someone submit the urban lot split through the middle of their piece of property now and through the the middle of their existing house? And then just leave it that way. So they get their lots with, they put it in position, but they then leave the house across the two lots, leaving it for future development.
Yes, yes, you potentially could have that. I don't anticipate anybody would subdivide their lot straight through the middle of their house because that would be problematic for a number of reasons. But yes, people could choose to subdivide their lot and, you know, either separately sell it to somebody who would be willing to build, you know, SB nine compliant project on the remainder parcel that was sold, or they could, you know, get the urban lot split approved and then sit on it.
All right, thanks. Mayor Prochamalahi, you're next on my screen.
Thank you. Yeah, I just talking about the subdivision map approval. Is, are the deadlines that the subdivision map, if it has been approved, the subdivision should take place within a certain period of time? I thought there were some time limits to be put on how 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 long that map is valid for before a subdivision project should start.
So that is, I believe you're referring to the time limits to record a final map after tentative map has been approved.
Right.
SB nine provides, so under the subdivision map act, the general state law with approval of subdivisions is that unless local ordinance provides otherwise, a lot split of less than five parcels can be approved by a parcel map rather than a tentative map and a final map. And the city's subdivision regulations require a more formal tentative map and final map for approval of any subdivision. However, SB nine says that you can only require a parcel map. So a parcel map doesn't go through a two-stage approval process, it is just approved once. So it is the recording of the parcel map that basically creates the lot split. So it's basically the process of getting approval of a final map at the very beginning, rather than getting a tentative map approval and then a final map.
I'm sorry, just just to council member Eli's point, I thought I read this too, that it is twenty-four months. So does that not apply?
For approval of parcel map?
For the final project after the map is approved. Sorry, I can, I can look up what I read, sorry. But sorry, but I I saw, I thought I saw there was a time limit imposed as well.
So the third provision of SB nine, which is not necessarily relevant to what we're discussing today, which is going to be the city's SB nine regulations for the two-unit subdivision or the two units on residential law provision and the urban law split, there's a third section of SB nine that extends the deadline for how long you have to finalize a final map for any subdivision anywhere in California. And it extends that time period to twenty-four months. That is not particularly relevant to either of the urban lot split provision or the provision related to creation of two units on a single residential lot.
That helps clarify that. Thank you. The other question I had on the eight hundred foot limitation. Can we just make that as part of an ordinance that there won't be any unit bigger than eight hundred square foot? Or do we have to say, under these objective standards, you can restrict it to eight hundred feet?
I believe that the restriction to eight hundred feet is itself an objective standard. So to me, that's pretty clear that you could have a requirement that says that for any lot subject to an urban lot split, you shall not create anything on the on the resulting parcels more than eight hundred square feet. Additionally, you could have SB nine restriction for projects that are two, you know, dwelling units on a residential parcel, let's say neither of those units that are created can be more than eight hundred square feet. So that is, that is definitely a possibility.
All right. So if you do that, then can somebody who comes in and really needs to build a bigger lot or sort of bigger unit, would the city council be able to give them a, would, I don't know, would that be called a variance or would that be called something else?
It it would be a variance, and I don't, I I would not recommend at this point providing for that. For ADUs, that is, it's very clear that you can't do that because the ADU statutes, you know, describes ministerial approval as being, you know, without reference to any sort of use permit or variance approval procedure. So with respect to ADUs, the state law is relatively clear that you can't seek a variance to, you know, modify your, you know, the kind of approval that you would get ministerially. Typically, I think, given, given the intent of the statute to require ministerial approval without public hearing, you know, for these types of projects, the best, you know, practice that I would recommend to to the city would be to adopt some sort of size limit that you think is reasonable for these projects and just move forward. So either their project complies with the size limit and is approvable or it's not.
All right, sounds good. And on ADUs, we have lots of twelve hundred square foot feet in certain cases, depending on the zoning. So would that twelve hundred square foot also limitation not apply?
No, so we have specific requirement. So with respect to the ADU size limits, those are in, let's see, those are in ten oh six one forty of the municipal code. And there are size limits that are slightly more generous than what is mandated by state law. I believe that the city, when it enacted these provisions in two thousand nineteen, increased the maximum allowed size for ADUs, but only in R one forty-four districts. And otherwise, I believe the state minimum is eight hundred fifty square feet for an ADU or a thousand square feet if the ADU provides more than one bedroom. So you could, in theory, have your SB nine projects restricted to a size smaller than that. So those are, those are not related statutes. So you can regulate the SB nine projects differently if you'd like to, or you could regulate them the same.
Great. Thank you so much.
All right, Commissioner Zebra.
Thank you. Um, for these SB nine projects where they're creating two units, I was looking at this provision about prohibiting interior access between dwelling units that was in the staff report. And the reason they say to prohibit that interior access is so that people don't use this process to ultimately create double what's allowed. So if we limit it to eight hundred, not to allow them to connect those two eight hundred structures, square foot structures and make sixteen hundred square foot structure. My question is, could we prohibit attached residential units altogether if it's a SB nine project? Because what I thought of is maybe we don't allow the connection, but then after the project is approved and built, they just punch a hole and connect them anyhow. So could we prohibit attached residential units possibly?
I believe that there's a provision in SB nine that specifically says that you cannot. And it, the language is an application shall not be rejected solely because it proposes adjacent or connected structures provided the structures meet building code safety standards and are sufficient to allow separate conveyance. So.
So no.
No.
All right, anything further at the moment?
Well, alternatively, can we make sure that each unit, attached unit, you know, has to have a kitchen and a bathroom and just make robust requirements for each individual unit to make less of an incentive to. unit to make less of an incentive to ultimately connect them.
Uh, yes, uh, to a certain extent, that would be taken care of by the building code and by state law, which regulates what must be in a habit, in a habitable residential unit, which includes a kitchen and bathroom. Um, but we could, you know, certainly consider additional requirements, uh, as we thought were reasonable with respect to, uh, you know, what units, what amenities units must include or cannot include.
Okay, thanks. That's all.
Great, thank you. Um, Commissioner Harrington.
Yes, my question is just for clarification for Sergio. Um, I was reading through, um, the town of Atherton's requirements. And it's my understanding from reading their document that once that SB nine lot split occurs, the front setback can be maintained, but all the setbacks for any building on the property goes to four foot side and rear setbacks. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, that is a provision in SB nine, which says that a local jurisdiction cannot require any side or rear setback greater than four feet. And it can require no setback where a structure is going to replace an existing structure. So if you have a non-conforming existing structure and someone wants to replace that with a residential unit, you can't change the setback requirement.
Okay. So I'm just thinking through all of the scenarios that people might want to do this. So someone might want to go through, do a lot split according to the law and the rules, not build anything on the second lot just to get four foot side setbacks to improve their property. And I guess there's nothing we could do other than require a building on the newly split and created lot, correct?
So with respect to, you know, typically if someone wants an urban lot split, they would still have to come in after the urban lot split and apply for building permits for whatever they want to build. Um, and if there's an existing single family building, um, you know, on that lot, they're not going to somehow be able to expand it. Um, you know, because that, that project already existed. That's not an SB nine project. And typically most single family homes in Monteserano are going to be, you know, several hundred or thousand square feet and presumably in excess of whatever size limit ultimately is enacted in your objective standards for SB nine projects. So that project wouldn't be allowed to, you know, expand uh, and, you know, put in some sort of expansion right up to the four foot limit. However, they could put in a new dwelling unit on that, or on that split lot. Um, so, you know, let's say there's, um, you know, a single family residence of 3,000 square foot on the front half of a 10,000 square foot lot. Uh, they split it in half. So now it's still on the front half. They would be entitled to, you know, apply for a second unit on that front half of the lot. Um, and that would be subject to, you know, the four, the four foot side and rear setbacks as, as you mentioned. Um, but it would still be subject to whatever, um, you know, height limits, square footage limits, um, whatever other objective standards that, you know, the city might want to enact on that type of project. But the original single family home likely wouldn't be able to just, you know, add on a new addition, uh, or a new wing, just because the setbacks had changed, if that makes sense.
Even, even if it were like a JADU that were attached to, um, a single family residence that exists?
So that, that's a little different because they're allowed to do that now. Um, you know, without the urban lot split. That's, that's a provision. They're allowed to do that under applicable state ADU and JADU law. Uh, that they're.
I, I understood that, that currently the JADU, when attached to the main house, has to conform to the city's current setbacks. That's not true?
Um, I do not believe that is the case. Um, and I'm just going to pull up the city zoning code and also the state ADU law to confirm that really quickly. Um, but one of the issues is, uh, with respect to, um, you know, under the state ADU law, six, five, eight, five, two dot two E. Um, um, it's in 1006140. Um, basically, uh, with respect to setbacks, um, yeah, and it, there, there are provisions with respect to, uh, state mandated ADU projects, which can only be limited to basically, um, a total floor. These are, these are the smaller ADUs that are no more than 800 square feet and no more than 16 feet in height. Uh, those are the kinds of projects that you cannot, uh, impose additional, um, size or zoning standards on. Uh, basically you have to permit them ministerially and issue them a building permit. Um, for larger ADU projects, you are still allowed to impose, um, um, you know, setbacks, but, um, the minimum side yard and rear yard setbacks in state law are four feet. So that's not particularly useful, um, with respect to, um, you know, preventing construction in that, uh, setback that is for, uh, single family residences.
So just, I'm still a little confused. So if someone did a lot split and they wanted to add a JADU that's attached to their home, they could technically go to the four foot limit, but now they can't, right? Um, but once it goes into that lot spit, split scenario, they can go to the four foot setback for a JADU, which is 500 square feet or less that's attached to the main house.
Um, so I'm not sure I understand your question just because I'm, I'm looking at our city code with respect to ADUs and it does follow, um, you know, state law with respect to, um, uh, setbacks. Um, I'm looking at our city code and a detached accessory dwelling unit shall comply with the set, front setback required for accessory structures in the zoning district within which is located. But notwithstanding any other provisions, this code shall have no less than a four foot side and four foot rear yard setback. So those are our current setbacks for detached accessory dwelling units.
I'm talking about an attached, a JADU.
Mm-hmm. Um, and a JADU setback, um. So we can't require them, um, we can't require any setbacks for JADUs that are constructed within existing space or accessory structure. Um, so we have a non-conforming home, you can convert that space without, you know, violating the city zoning code of, or state law. And then, um, one of the, one of the issues is under the state mandated approval provisions, um, you can't, you, you are permitting an expansion of up to 150 feet to accommodate ingress and egress, um, subject to a minimum setback of four, four feet, uh, side and rear. So that, there is some finagle room in terms of what those setbacks are and you can in certain instances, get approval of up to a, a setback for JADU as little as four feet.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Um, anything further, Ms. Harrington, at the moment?
That's it for now.
Okay, uh, Commissioner White.
Uh, thank you. Sergio, another one for you. Heather, you introduced the subject for me perfectly, but I have a follow-up. Uh, we can prohibit though, two-story structures where those four foot setbacks exist. Is that correct?
Yes.
And we can also prohibit, um, certain like outdoor living amenities like, uh, covered porches and trellises and things of that nature.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah, um, and actually, uh, following back around on this because now I've, I've gotten myself confused in my notes. Um, in terms of ADUs, um, in the second units, uh, situation as well as the lots split, we are allowed to prohibit the ADU. So we don't end up with more than four units. Is that right?
Uh, that's correct. So you can prohibit ADUs, but only if someone is using both the urban lot split provision and the two units on a single lot provision. So in theory, someone could use the SB nine provision, um, you know, and have an ADU, but then they couldn't do an urban lot split afterwards, if that makes sense.
It does. So they could have their, uh, ADU, their primary unit, and then they could, could do the, uh, second unit, uh, request.
Yes.
Similarly, they could have a JADU, um, and then, uh, add the second unit. But they couldn't do both a second unit, uh, and an ADU and a JADU? Or is that, that's still theoretically possible to, to squeeze all four in there?
Um, no, that's correct. And actually, the, the development scenarios for SB nine projects are laid out on page four of the PDF uh, of the staff report.
All right. I'll study that some more while we, uh, bring Ms. Turner on with her questions.
Uh, yes, I, I have a, a question with respect to an ADU and a guest house. So if I have, uh, an existing house and I also have a guest house or a pool house, does my guest house count as my ADU or can I have another ADU?
I'm going to kick this one to Diana, um, because I do believe we have additional provisions in our zoning code related to accessory structures and that a pool house is not necessarily an ADU. Uh, Diana, do you want to take a crack at this one while I look up the zoning code on that?
Yes, um, thank you. So if, um, your guest house were to meet the definition of, um, a habitable dwelling unit, which would include, um, a bathroom and cooking facilities, then that would be your ADU. If it were just a pool house that was, you know, living space, a family room, um, kind of, you know, gathering space without, um, the cooking facilities and, um, a bathroom, then that would be considered an accessory structure and you would still be able to build a separate ADU.
So I think what we need to do then is to clarify our definition of what an ADU is. So an ADU means a building that, uh, can be used, uh, for people living independently, for example, as well as separate kitchen, bath, sleeping area and living facilities. And then we, we also need, is there, is there a difference between a detached ADU, uh, and a patched ADU or a JADU? Is it JADU, the same thing as a patched ADU?
Um, the JADU has some additional, um, restrictions. It is restricted to 500 square feet, so a smaller size than the ADU. Um, and there is an allowance that the JADU, um, is required to have access to the main unit and is actually prohibited from having, um, independent access from the, um, the exterior as well as the JADU can, um, share the bathroom with the main house. So the JADU is really intended for conversion of existing space. Um, the ADU can be either. It could be an attached addition, um, or a detached structure.
So same couple kids, can someone then say, I want a, an ADU on the second level of my building?
Yes.
Okay. So that's what you considered an attached ADU, correct?
Correct. And the attached ADUs would need to meet, um, looking this up as I'm speaking, sorry, just have it, would need to meet, um, the setbacks for the primary dwelling unit in the zoning district when it's attached.
So if I have a detached ADU, do I, do I need to have a separate address?
Um, our current practice is if you request a separate address, we will assign one. Um, it is actually a question that we have pending with the fire department if they would prefer us to assign a separate address for all ADUs or, um, if as requested, um, is, is acceptable to them. So that, that's a pending, um, question we have with the Santa Clara County Fire Department.
Okay, I have one more last question. Can my attached ADU then be connected to my pool house? And, and consider that as a detached accessory dwelling?
If it is the conversion of existing space, then it could be attached. If it were new construction, they would need to be separate structures.
Those are pretty complicated. I think we need to somehow document all of these for, for residents.
Yeah, um, sounds good. Um, and, and like, as I say, ultimately it sounds like we're going to need a, a very complicated matrix of what can and can't be done and where it can, can't be done. Uh, but first we get to make up all the rules, uh, within the law, which is what we're studying tonight. Uh, so let's go ahead and move on to Ms. Lawler and, uh, we'll get through a few more of our questions and then we can open up our public comment section and, uh, take input from the public and then we'll come back and, and have our discussion.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Rudin, can the go reading through this, it was my impression that the four foot setback could be overridden. If, if the lot size prohibits building two units on an SB nine lot, is that am I mistaken? The way it read, it made it sound like it, it could be overridden if you couldn't get two buildings on it. Did we lose them?
Looks like we.
No, no, I'm just pulling up the statute really quickly. Um, so let's see, paragraph two says, "A local agency shall not impose zoning standards, objective subdivision standards, and objective design standards that would have the effect of physically precluding the construction of two units on either of the resulting parcels that or that would result in the size of 800 square feet." And then there's another provision in paragraph three, notwithstanding that paragraph, uh, "A local agency may require a setback of up to four feet from the side and rear lot lines." So yes, I think you can actually require, uh, for the urban lot split, uh, that those four foot side and rear setbacks be maintained. Uh, let's take a double check that the same thing is there in the, um, two-unit provision. Withstanding sub-paragraph, okay. Okay, yeah. And same thing with the, uh, two units on one lot.
Okay. So there's no way that it has to be four feet and nothing less?
Yes.
Okay, good. And then the other, the other question, I don't know how important it is, but, but builders are supposed to sign an affidavit that they're going to live in the structure for three years. How is that? And but we're not allowed to enforce that or what? How is that going to look?
So, um, with respect to the urban lot split provision, um, um, there's a requirement, um, that an applicant for an urban lot split sign an affidavit that the applicant intends to occupy one of the housing units as their principal resident for minimum three years from the date of the approval. But that same section says, "A local agency shall not oppose additional owner occupancy standards" um, on an urban lot split. So that's basically all you can require is them to sign under penalty of perjury, that they do intend to use it. Um, and in theory, since they, if they are lying and you can demonstrate that they have committed a crime, um, and that would be subject to enforcement. Now, I don't anticipate that a district attorney would ever prosecute somebody for perjury. Um, so I think as, as you point out, enforcement will be difficult.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Councilman Remekachuk.
I'm wondering if we, I see that under J, uh, sub one and J sub two, you talk about, uh, off-street parking. But if we can require that there be an exterior, uh, electric car charging station, at least one in a lot split, so that we're anticipating, notwithstanding. So that we're anticipating, notwithstanding the building code and the and our reach codes. So so we can require people, if they want to do an urban lot split. They make sure that they're going to be able to charge at least one vehicle at in each house after the lot split.
I think that that is likely a possible requirement. That being said, I'm not need to think about that a little bit, just because I'm not sure you can necessarily. Well, you can require one off street parking space per unit under the urban lot split. And then with respect to the two. Yeah, you can also require off street parking of one space per unit on under the two unit provision. I don't anticipate any parcel in the city is going to be located within a half mile of a high quality transit corridor as defined. Nor that there are any car share vehicles located anywhere near Montessorino. So, yeah, I think realistically, you could impose that requirement.
I think that would be something that we should consider, where the effect of a minimum of one exterior electric car charging station be provided on each parcel. Subsequent to a lot split.
So would you like that? Are you thinking of including that on lot split projects or two unit on a residential parcel projects or both?
Both.
Okay.
And I guess just to expand on that, because I I'm not sure if I if there was a definitive answer or a reason not. Is there a reason why we wouldn't require one per unit as opposed to one per parcel?
I I would recommend tying it to one to the requirement for off street parking. So if you're requiring one off street parking space per unit, then it would make sense to do that, although you could have, you could have it be one per parcel. It's really up to up to the council and commission to think about what's more appropriate for these types of projects.
Okay. Mr. Mecha Chuck, anything further?
No.
You've fallen off. Okay. Mayor Protemalai.
Thank you. Yeah, I think under the the recourse that we passed previously, there is some requirement for new units to have either charging facilities or a backup solar facilities or facility, facilities where you have electric ones. With, you know, you can have an option for gas. And I and I think moving further on that on down that path, since there's a huge environmental issue in San Jose. City Council has passed an ordinance and found it as an objective standard that all new construction should not be, should not have any gas appliances or any gas used in the plants since it's causing enormous environmental issues. So perhaps there should be another thing we should consider, requiring the new lots that people are doing the splits. When they do building, build their homes, they'd be all electric.
All right, sounds like another idea we can we can look to discuss further. And Commissioner Zedler.
I was looking at this part toward the end of the staff report about related permit reviews for SB nine projects. That talks about tree removal permits and grading use permits. That they have to be reviewed ministerially as well. And I guess the grading use one, we have some protection with the health and safety language. Because if you're going to get grading that causes erosion, you know, that would be problematic potentially. So maybe the staff there can stop projects or modify projects that are a bad idea. But I wondered how, how can we protect our large trees? Because there are lots of lots, maybe where there's a house and then a majestic oak or several large trees. How are we going to handle the review there? Because we wouldn't want those to just get green lighted and have 150 year tree cut down in a lot split. I don't know.
Mr. Rudin, any input on on the on the tree issue?
Unfortunately, I don't have particularly good news on that one. There's not, there's not an easy solution to this. You know, one of the issues is these projects shall be approved, it shall be ministerial, and you can only deny them based on very limited circumstances, basically. You know, significant, you know. You know, threat to public's health or safety based on our articulable standard that the city has adopted. It's the same standard for denying a project subject to the Housing Accountability Act, basically. And so the reality is, is despite the significant aesthetic harm. You know, I think that the statute would mandate the approval of that type of project, unfortunately. So it's not, I don't have good news.
No, that's not good news. Could you make an objective standard that the unit not be built within, you know, 15 feet of a tree of a certain size, require them to place it sort of out of the drip line?
I think that that is sufficiently objective. The issue here is that you could not impose that requirement unless or in the circumstances that would, it would preclude the construction of any, you know, of at least you know, the two 800 square foot units that you're allowed on your residential parcel or your Yeah, so.
Perhaps we add something that says, no, you shouldn't build it where there's a tree. Provided it doesn't preclude an 800 foot structure.
So you could do that, I think. That would minimize the amount of times that scenario could potentially happen.
All right, excellent. I will be marketing our Senator Cortezi and Representative Lowe hate the environment shirts in the lobby after the meeting. Okay, Ms. Sharma.
Oh, I'm sorry, who was that? Could you, was I called?
Actually, Commissioner Sharma slipped ahead of you, Ms. Turner.
Okay, sorry, sorry, I'm sorry.
Sorry, my question was a follow up to Commissioner Ziedler's.
We just lost your, you just muted yourself or someone.
Sorry. So as a follow up to Commissioner Ziedler's, a question about, you know, like the the big trees. Since we can put like, can we put in objective standards around like the environment? I mean, wouldn't those be subject to like the environment quality of our city? If we're going to start cutting down big trees, can we put in standards that maybe, you know, either to the age or the circumference or the canopy size or something, or the species of the trees? So that we don't lose all our big trees, you know, because of this SB nine, and they won't even come in front of any of the any of the commissions either, because the process will be ministerial.
Yeah, sounds, sounds like something that we are able to consider. So so let's keep that in mind as we come back to discussion. And it might be a challenge for for staff. All right, Councilmember Turner.
Yes, I have a quick question. This is in relationship to respect to parking. Where parking is required, can we say that the parking needs to be covered and placed outside of the front and side yard setbacks? So we shouldn't use the setbacks for parking spaces?
I would say that likely the answer is going to be no. At least with respect to ADUs. There are restrictions on you know, prohibiting tandem parking and things like that. I suspect that the answer to that is going to be no, but I will look into that further.
Yeah, it looked like there were a lot of restrictions on how you could restrict parking that were hard coded in, but we can take another look at that. Okay, Commissioner Zedler. You still have a hand up. Okay, now you don't have a hand up. All right, let's go ahead and bring this around to public comment. I know we have several members of the public with us this evening who have expressed interest in participating. Let's go ahead and get their input, and then we can bring this back to our discussion and study group. And if I get the spoken up, let's go ahead. And if you're interested in speaking tonight, please raise your hand. I will call on people in order. And I'll give a heads up that where you stand in line if you're next up. So we are going to begin with Jeffrey Schwartz. And then Amir Hadid will be speaking next, followed by Lon Allen. Mr. Schwartz, at your convenience.
Thank you very much, Mayor, members of the council. I think the early discussion had two items that were frequently perhaps misunderstood. First, the requirement of the law SB nine is that the parcels, the extra units that are built cannot be regulated by the city to be less than 800 square feet. You could, you can impose regulations above that. Some of the discussions suggested that they would be 800 feet maximum. They're 800 feet minimum, the four units that could be built on the two subdivided parcels. Second, much of the discussion was about ADUs and junior ADUs. Those laws are already in place. That's really not the issue. This SB nine is potentially disastrous for Montessorino, as it is for Saratoga, where I live. Because you could live on a residential street with single family homes and you like the street just fine. The people next to you decide, for whatever reason, to sell, or they were interested in selling. And instead of selling and you finding the same house next to you that's been there forever. You suddenly find that the lot is subdivided. They make out the people who own the lot and the house do fine, because they can now sell for more money than they could have before this. But they sell the property subdivided into, there are a duplex. Two units are built on each of the halves of the lot that was next to you. And now you wake up and there are two duplexes next to you, four rental units or for sale units next to you in what was before this, a normal residential street. It is a disastrous potential for many people in Montessorino, in fact, in the West Valley and throughout California. It applies to almost any residential lot. The answer to this is, there is an initiative being proposed. It is currently being circulated for signatures. It's called our neighborhood voices. It would restore local control and allow local government, cities or counties to override any of the state laws that have a one size fit all nature that dictates housing or zoning standards. So those laws would remain on the books, but any local decision would take precedence. And I'd encourage anyone listening to take a look at that, our neighborhood, go to ourneighborhoodvoices.com and take a look at that initiative, which is an answer not only to SB nine, but to RENA, SB thirty five and other state imposed problems as well. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Hadid, and after that, we'll go to Lon Allen, and then Megan Mills will follow Mr. Allen. Mr. Hadid, at your convenience.
Can you hear me?
Yes, there you are.
Actually, I have more questions than discussion, actually, because from your discussion, I did not get many of the clarifications I was seeking. For example, I want to know what is the size of the lot that you're going to split? And I mean, most of our neighborhood, you have to have a one acre or more. So can you split the acre into however many size lots? I don't know. Where do we get this clarification? And if you did that, can you sell these things? Or do you have to actually build yourself, or maybe find somebody who wants to buy the lot and build on it? And so my question, how are we? So let's say you did that, you build a house, can you rent it? All these questions I have in my mind, and I did not get the answers from your discussion. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. And we will attempt, as we come back to, certainly to help answer any of these questions. Make sure that you're understanding them as well as all of the members of the commission and the council and staff, so.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, moving now to Lon Allen, followed by Megan Mills. Anyone else who would like to speak, please go ahead and get your hands ready. Mr. Allen.
On mute, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Well, actually, what I wanted to do was thank the council members and the commissioners. I, listening for the last hour and six or seven minutes, my sense is that everybody on the council and everybody on the SNA Commission realizes that most of us moved here, most of our lots, most of the land of the 1.6 acres is in minimum acre lots, because we wanted this lifestyle. If we wanted to live in high density, we'd buy a condo in downtown San Jose or downtown San Francisco. And just listening to the discussion, my sense is that the council and the commission is going to do whatever Diana and Sergio are going to allow you to do to protect against a high density, so we don't see another disaster like the Hacienda, which is a blight, in my humble opinion on our city, where Barry and I have lived for 42 years. So I don't have any questions. I will follow the process, but I, I, it sounds like everybody is everybody is on top of this, and Mary's in the background saying do sign that petition that Jeff Schwartz mentioned. It's because you know, we, we do need local control, and those of us who want to live in quasi rural areas should have the right to do so. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, moving now to Megan Mills. And I don't have any hands up after that, so anyone else who'd like to be recognized to speak, please go ahead and get ready to do so. Ms. Mills.
Hi, I'm going to follow up on a question that Mr. Schwartz had, and that was about in the report earlier, it was about a minimum lot size, house size of 800 square foot. As opposed to what you've been speaking about all evening, a maximum of 800 square foot for a housing size. So I'd like you to clarify that. And is that for the main house or is that for both the ADU or only for the ADU? And and I, as I understand it, that's, you know, you're going to follow guidelines as long as they don't conflict with the state statute. And I don't believe the, I don't believe that the housing size is the same that you're talking about. So again, clarification. I agree that, you know, it should, you know, there's so many lots that should not be subdivided. But I think that in the past, there have been lots that have been large enough that should have been been able to be subdivided. And this is where there's going to be some problems is that you know, in larger lots, that you may want to, you know, a few acre lots, a few acres in a lot. And to be able to subdivide that should be allowable and be able to build a house of a decent size. So if you restrict too much, you're going to open yourself up to lawsuits. So I just want to make sure that you're being you're looking at that aspect of it as well, that you're maybe taking these things on as a case by case decision and not setting up so many restrictions that you know, that you're looking for, you know, battling lawsuits on these issues. So there are so many younger families that really need to be able to buy a house these days that it's unaffordable. I know there's two in totally different ends of the in totally different ends of the spectrum on this. So that's about all I have to say on that. Okay.
Thank you for your input. All right, next up will be Ishan Prasad, followed by Tony Jeans, then Anne Hayes. Ishan Prasad, at your convenience.
Hi, so I am the son of Commissioner Pallavi Sharma, who is also here right now, but that is not what I'm here for. So the reason I'm here is because I grew up in Saratoga and then I grew, and then I moved to Montessorino when I was in seventh grade. And the only thing I remember about my childhood and the only thing I remember about the communities that I grew up in was that we were excluded from the entire for lack of a better word, scariness of the big cities. We didn't have giant skyscrapers. We didn't have drugs and crime roaming the streets. You could safely walk outside without any fear. You could let your kids walk outside without any fear. And what I worry about with SB nine and SB ten is that we're opening ourselves up, or not we, the California legislation has opened us up to seeing huge influxes of communities which isn't on its own a bad thing, but the problem is it takes away our control. It takes away the control of the city to approve things on a case by case basis. Nothing in the past prevented us from building skyscrapers besides structural codes, which was just, it was just that developers would have to get our approval. And now with that permission gone, we need, I, I see both ends of this and I see that I don't think this will solve any homelessness crisis. What I do see is that it will take away our power. And that's why I am in favor of signing the petition, ourneighborhoodvoices.com, whoever brought that up. I just looked at the website. It looks incredible. But also imposing as many restrictions as we can so that we aren't left in a situation where developers are able to come in, make billions off of subdividing plots and ruining the community for its, for our residents. But instead that our own city government, our site and architecture commission can approve it on a conditional basis, on a case by case basis, the way that it used to be. That's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving next to Tony Jeans, followed by Anne Hayes, then Bruce Ehrman. Mr. Jeans.
Hello, everyone, commissioners and committee members. I received the staff report on Friday and wrote a few notes down. I'm not going to go through them now. I would encourage you to read them and try and see if you think some of the things that I might be talking about make sense. I will talk about a couple of a couple of things that I think I would like to see as a Montessorino resident. And for those who don't know, I'm, I also design homes here. So I wear two hats. I think the site and architecture committee is very important and plays a major role. And I would like to see the end result of this. Something that will enable obviously the requirements for SB nine to be met, but if someone chooses not to go with a ministerial project as on, on the tail end of, let's say, an urban lot split, they should not be restricted to two eight hundred foot homes, but they should be restricted to whatever the site and architecture committee determines is appropriate based on the zoning rules that would be enforced based on that urban lot split. And when you do an urban lot split, you typically go down one zone. So you're for example, in a, in a, an R one twenty zoning district, you would probably be restricted to R one eight zoning sized houses. I don't expect people to come in and try and build multiple houses, but I do expect them to build a smaller one. And I would like to see something thought through that would enable a perhaps ministerial approval for a small, if you're going to make it eight hundred feet, make it eight hundred feet, but also allow a regular process to go through site and architecture to have a reasonable home put on the resulting lot from an urban lot split. I do not want to see a series of eight hundred foot units dotted all over Montessorino because we are rather short sighted on this. I would encourage site and architecture and the council to find a way to give more flexibility if S and A is used and less flexibility if ministerial processes are used. I I have a lot more that I could say, but I'm prepared to talk to site and architecture committee members and council members as it, as we near their respective hearings when I've had more time to think through some of this. So please treat my initial thoughts that I put down just as that initial thoughts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next up will be Anne Hayes, followed by Bruce Ehrman, if I'm pronouncing that right, Ms. Hayes. Go ahead and unmute and we're ready for you when you're ready. Looks like you're still on mute.
There you are. Yes, this is Kevin Hayes, Anne Hayes' husband, speaking on Anne Hayes' computer. You know, first of all, good evening, everyone. I'd like to speak in support of what Tony Jean said there in relation to the site and architecture committee being instrumental in the sizing of a lot appropriate home. I think that's a very, very good idea. But more importantly, I'd just like to speak on behalf of some other neighborhood voices. Since September the sixteenth, I've spoken to a number of my neighbors here in Montessorino, and I haven't found anyone who at least at this stage is opposed to the idea and doesn't see it as some, some horrific sort of dystopian kind of future for Montessorino. I, I look at it on a both a macro and micro level and a macro in the sense of the state of California needs this. The businesses go to Texas and everywhere else. The common, the common complaint and issue is the housing availability. And for too long in California, we've had this nimbyism of not of restricting development. And I think it just has to change. But from a, a micro point of view, in other words, from my own selfish point of view, I see it as an opportunity to realize the value of my real estate. And I think a lot of my neighbors at least agree with me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Bruce Ehrman, probably got the pronunciation wrong. Go ahead and bring you to the speaker's podium and anyone else, I don't have additional hands. So anyone else who would like to speak and be heard today, please queue yourself up. Go ahead, Mr. Ehrman.
Yeah, hi, Bruce Ehrman. I'd like to piggyback on the last two discussions regarding lot size and structure size. If there's an existing, if there's two existing structures and one is, and they can be divided into the two structures on the two lots, what is the size, what is, what is the size variation that could be made on that second structure? Is it limited to eight hundred square feet or is an addition of eight hundred square feet built onto the existing structure?
All right, we'll get around to trying to answer some of the questions. When we're done, I don't think we'll be able to answer real time. So do you have other questions or comments? Go ahead and
There's no speak.
You speak. There's no answer.
Are you kidding?
Yeah, so we will try to get you the answer when we come back and get back to discussion. Did you have any further comments you wanted to add?
No, that was my only point.
Thanks. All right, great. We'll try to get you that answer. Thank you very much. Moving down, we have, if we have anyone else who wishes to speak, please raise your hand to queue you up. I do have Jeffrey Schwartz as a repeat offender here. And we'll go ahead and recognize you for a brief comment before we wrap things up. If anyone else wishes to speak, please raise your hand and stand in line. Otherwise, we will be closing public comment in a moment. Mr. Schwartz.
Thank you for allowing me a second comment. The person who asked about lot split size, the answer is actually quite clear. It's not one acre or half acre, any residential legal lot in the state that can be subdivided and each half has to be twelve hundred square feet. That's way under, that's under an eighth of an acre. It's actually less than that. So any legal lot in any residential lot in Montessorino could be subdivided under this law and the city would have no say in that. Then on each half, you could build a duplex or two units on each half that were then subdivided. My second comment is that nothing in SB nine, there's a lot of talk about a housing crisis. I think that's in a, I think it's inappropriate. There's an affordability crisis that's different than a housing crisis. The affordability crisis is because of supply and, and demand. That's why prices keep going up for houses. But nothing in SB nine says one word about affordable housing. It is not a law that is going to help homeless. It's not a law that's going to help communities of color or other poor communities. And what the notion that people should go to site and architecture voluntarily is a great idea, except the reason they will use this law is to maximize profit. And they are very unlikely to maximize profit by subdividing and then looking for four units to be built and then go to site and architecture and placing themselves under that kind of control because this law says they don't have to. I'll stop with that, but thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, all right, I'm seeing no further hands. So this is going to be last call if anyone wants to recognize, be recognized for public comment. We have someone with the initial A who had their hand up briefly. We'll go ahead and recognize you. Okay. I see a note from initial A. You can go ahead and speak if you wish. We can recognize you to be heard. Otherwise, if you don't wish to speak, we can read your comment from the chat into the record. Would you like to unmute and go ahead? Okay, audio problems. Okay, so initial A says, as far as I understand, environmental impact reports cannot be used to deny any building plans. So trees will not have any protection. That's a comment question that we can come back to and talk about some more as we return to our discussion and guidance tonight. Thank you for that. All right, this time I will close public comment and bring this back to the commission members and council members for discussion. So comments, Ms. Sharma. So your hand up first, go ahead.
Thank you. So my, my question, I think, came out from some of the discussion that, that I heard from the community members. So I want to clarify this. Based on the staff report, it basically says today's regulation allows that we can have one main house, a JDU and an ADU. But since, and I, and I looked this up while, while we were talking, since the rules on the ADU and JDU are separate from SB nine and SB ten, what this would mean is any new dwelling unit that, that is allowed on these split parcels could also have an ADU and JADU because there's nothing in there that's, that in SB nine that precludes it. So I, I want to clarify this, that are we talking about like these four potential units on a sing, like what used to be one can be split now into two parcels with two housing units? Plus, each one can have an ADU in addition to that? Is that, is that the limit now?
Yeah, Mr. Ed, and I think there are some answers to that about limitations we can impose on ADUs or JADUs.
Yes, so basically, there was a question about what the minimum parcel lot sizes for the urban lot split. The lots that are created have to each be no smaller than twelve hundred square feet. And with respect to the number of units, people can elect to either use the two units you know, on an existing lot. So, or they can elect to use the urban lot split provision, or they can elect to use both, right? So you have different combinations here. The SB nine says that when they elect to use both, the city can restrict the creation of accessory dwelling units. So basic, basically, your permutations are that if you choose not to have an urban lot split, you can use the two unit provision and then you can have an ADU and a JADU, and that would result in no more than four units. And then basically you would not be capable of relying on the urban lot split provision because then you'd be prohibited from doing an urban lots by the provision that says you can't have an ADU. And if you choose to do the urban lot split, then you can you know, you, you can combine that with the two units on a single lot provision, or you cannot. You could choose to do just one home on each lot that has now been split. And so in that respect, you know, you would have the urban lot split, you could you know, potentially create that, you know, either, either the two units on each split lot under the SB nine ministerial approval, or you'd have to you know, seek approval of a site development permit if you wanted to go a different route with that. Now additionally, the city could enact a provision that limits the size of what you can create on the urban lot split lots, provided it doesn't result in a limit of less than eight hundred square foot per dwelling unit. So in theory, the city can ban you know, the ability to create what we typically refer to as the primary residence on an urban lot split provision. And you know, impose lower size limits on these lots that are urban lot splits. So you can do that. So that's, that's ultimately how you would control that concern about, about development.
Got it. Thank you so much.
All right, following up on that, it sounds, I had two questions which come out of that, that I'll exercise my prerogative to get answered. First of all, it says twelve hundred square foot for the minimum. I think the word split we think of as being somewhat equal. Is there, is, are there provisions that discuss the sizes or could somebody split off a twelve hundred square foot lot from their one acre? Does there have to be a balance in lots?
Yes, one parcel should not be smaller than forty percent of the original lot area. So they have to be roughly equal.
And that's already in the state law? We don't need to codify that?
That's correct. And that is in the proposed code language that has been included in the packet is requirements to satisfy that.
Okay, and then the second question that comes out of Ms. Sharma's question is, so it sounds like a person could use the lot split to, but not the two units. So they could use the lot split and then it is theoretically possible that they could get their primary residence, an ADU and a junior ADU. And so there is a theoretical possibility of six units of a sort, if you count a JADU as a unit.
Yes, except for there is a provision that says a local agency shall not impose objective zoning standards, subdivision standards or designer review standards that would have the effect of physically permitting the construction of two units on subdivision standards, or designer review standards that would have the effect of physically permitting the construction of two units on either of the resulting parcels. Or that would result in a unit size of less than 800 square feet. So in theory, you could read the converse of that as allowing that limitation. And one thing that we have seen some jurisdictions do, if they want to be really restrictive with respect to these types of things is when you get approval of the urban lot split, there's a restriction that you can basically do no more than two units of 800 square feet. Period. So.
All right. Thank you for the clarification. Councilmember Lawler.
Okay, so, so to clarify, I actually, so my question is obviously we need to discuss how big or how, how big we're going to allow these things to be, right? So my question is regarding the, the, the lots that are going to be most impacted, that are the smallest are the R18 lots. So how do we calculate pervious or impervious coverage on these lots? Right now, as it stands, they can, you can have a 3,000 or 3,300 square foot home on this lot. So when we split an R18, how, what would be the appropriate pervia or impervious coverage? Obviously, that would be for Diana, but I mean, we need to figure that out because these are the ones that are going to be really tight, right? So these are the lots that are most likely going to have the 800 square foot units.
Yeah, and as proposed, the, the code would say that you are subject to the zoning and coverage requirements of the underlying zoning districts unless it would have the effect of precluding the construction of an 800 square foot unit. So that would, that would be what staff have proposed as sort of the most restrictive option that is being put for you. And Diana, I, I'll let you answer the impervious and structural coverage questions.
Thank you. So currently, as we're suggesting tonight, the impervious coverage and structural coverages of the zoning districts would not change. They are currently a percentage of the overall lot size. So it would still be relative to the new lot sizes. And as Sergio mentioned, they would then limit the amount of development that could be placed on the lot with the exception to not preclude a unit less than 800 square feet for the SB nine, any SB nine units.
Right. So would we need to create a new zone that's smaller than an R18? Or do we just leave it?
It would, the zoning district does not change. The zoning district would still be R18 for the new lots. And so the same permissions will apply as, as the current zoning.
Okay, okay. And then, and then to Mr. Jean's point, is there a language, I think, I think we already talked about this incentivizing builders to go through SNA for more flexibility. That would be, if someone initiates an urban lot split at the SB nine, they are not required to build two units. They could then decide to build a primary residence and an ADU and a JADU, but then that makes them subject to SNA and council approval, correct?
So that, that really does depend. It depends on the sort of lot size that is created. And it depends on what the council decides to enact as its SB nine restrict or, or objective standards for urban lot splits. So in theory, you could en- enact an objective subdivision and zoning standards that says for urban lot splits, you are allowed to construct on each created lot. You know, up to two units of, up to, of, of no more than 800 square feet. That would be the most restrictive option. And if you said that they must do that, and that is the only thing that they can create, then you would take away the option of going to site and architecture commission. Otherwise, if the lot that is created by the urban lot split provision is sufficient to be a minimum lot, under the minimum lot size for that zoning district, then in theory, it would not, it doesn't have to be treated any differently than if they just got a regular subdivision approved. And again, this is something for the, the city council and for the commission to consider is do you want to preserve that option? Or would you like to discourage or limit, you know, the ministerial approval of urban lot splits by enacting more restrictive regulations? So those are, that, that's a policy call.
Got it. Thanks.
Right. Thank you. So again, just want to expand on what Ms. Lawler's question was and make sure I understood correctly. Ms. Perkins, if, if the R18 house size is 3,300 square feet currently, it sounds like it would make sense that that would, that R18 lot that is then split and then two units are developed would be for 800 square foot units coming in at 3,200 square feet. Does that seem to make sense?
So, so the current unit size in the zoning code is for the main dwelling unit. On projects that would be submitted under the SB nine regulations can have different standards. So the number of units and the square footage of each unit would be two, two things that, that you can regulate. So on the resulting lot, as Sergio mentioned, you could choose to limit it to units of 800 square, two units of 800 square feet each. Another option that we put in the staff report for discussion would be that the two units allowed under SB nine could, the sum of the two units could total the current allowed main dwelling unit size. So the same square footage that we currently have in the one unit could be split between the two. And that was just an option for discussion.
All right. Thank you.
And then I believe the third option was limited, limit the two units to whatever is the ADU size that is currently allowed. Since that's our analog for projects that are subject to ministerial approval and we have different sizes for those as well.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Turner.
Yes, I wanted to follow up your, your questions. Mayor Lufo and Councilmember Lawler. For, for an R18, when you split it, you can split it into two ways, right? You can do a 50/50 split of the lot or a 40/60. Is that correct?
That's correct, or anything between those two.
Okay. In, in, in that case, can we introduce them flag lots?
Yes. So that again is you know, a, a point of discussion for tonight's meeting and any direction that, that the council and commission can provide on the lot frontage requirement. In the staff report, again, for, just for a point of discussion, we did suggest that perhaps the frontage of the new parcels to be a minimum of 10% of the original frontage or as required by the California fire code for access.
Thank you. And I also wanted to respond to Jeffrey Schwartz's comment about the United Voices, I think it is. I introduced a draft, a sample resolution for the council to consider to support the state initiative. And I wanted to make sure that we agendize that so that we can vote on it as the council. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Seidler.
Hi. So I'm trying to understand. So if you currently have an acre and you have a very large house built on, let's say, half the acre with impervious pavers. Can they split that, that acre lot in half? That where maybe most of the coverage has already been done? And then create sort of a virgin second lot that then would have this development to the, and end up going way over the coverage ratios we typically want to see. Basically, if, if your current acre has all the development on half and then you do a lot split and build more on that undeveloped side and then end up way, way over, can that happen? And is there anything we can do about it?
Short answer, yes, that could happen. But if you have the resulting parcel be in excess of the city's coverage limits, you know, they would basically become a lawful non-conforming use parcel and that would restrict future opportunities for development. So you know, if they wanted to, you know, put an addition on their house or change something or do something that would require, you know, a, a permit at that point. You know, if they wanted to change some sort of design that was subject to discretionary review, the city could require, you know, as a condition of approval correction of that non-conforming condition. But otherwise, if you're not changing things that are already in existence on that lot, then and it's now a separate legal lot, chances are the city probably would have to leave it be as it were.
It seems like that could create a lot of runoff problems.
Back to the environmental t-shirt that I'll be selling in lobby. Just joking. Okay, Councilmember Mekachak.
As I understand what's been said and, and maybe I'm either slow or wrong or both. The minimum lot size, if someone does a split, is 1,200 square feet for that new lot. Is that correct?
So statewide, yes, but I, I suspect there's very few lots in the city that are in existence now that are under 8,000 square feet. So since we have under SB nine, a limit of how many times you can subdivide under the urban lot split provision, i.e. once. I think right now functionally, you're looking at even for the smallest lots in the city that would come under the urban lot split provision, probably lots of at least in excess of 3,000 square feet would be my guess. And I'm hoping the planner who is more familiar with our lot sizes can sort of corroborate this or not.
Yes, there are some lots that are in the R18 zoning district that are substandard, but I'm not aware of any that your essentially would be less than 3,000 square feet to be able to result in the minimum 1,200 square foot lot. Because the split would need to be a minute, each lot would need to be a minimum of 40% of the total.
What percent of the total? I'm sorry?
Forty?
Forty.
Four zero?
I understood, understood. And then even if you did the minimum lot split, the minimum size of the new dwelling is 800 square feet, right?
That could be a restriction. That, that.
Minimum, not the maximum.
That would be the minimum that would have to be allowed for, yes.
Right. So, so theoretically, if we had, I don't think we have, well, let's say we had a 6,000 square foot lot. And then you did a minimum of 40% of that, that's 20, 2,400 square feet. And then you put an 800 square foot home on a 2,400 square foot lot. You would still have to meet. No. If you did that, then you could exceed the structural coverage, but not necessarily the impervious coverage. And, and our zoning would, would, would deal with that. I guess what I'm wondering is, where do we want to go with this? Do we want? What size lots do we want to allow to be lot split, if any? And if we do want some lot splits to occur, then what's the minimum size and what are the metrics we're getting at? So those are questions that I don't have the answers to. But then regardless of what the answer is, what I think we need to do is when we come back to approve the objective standards, we need to have some examples of an R18, an R120 and an R144 to say, here's the minimum split size that you could have. Here's the, and what happened with, what would happen with the coverages, et cetera. And then compiling that, I guess, is, is the frontage. And I think the minimum driveway is 15, 15 feet wide for a fire vehicle, emergency vehicle. So, and I think our minimum cover of lot frontage is 70, 70 feet in an R18. So you could have 70 less 15. So you could have a flag lot, if you will, if it had a 15 foot street entrance. Those are a couple of comments and thoughts and questions. So I don't know exactly where we want to give direction. This is a question for both council and for site and architecture. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I will just sort of in- input a little bit more information into this in terms of what I can see in the city zoning code for structural coverage and impervious coverage. It tends to scale. So the larger the lot is, the less overall coverage is allowed. For the smallest district, R18, I believe it's a 40% maximum structural and a 60% impervious. So just as a baseline for what we presently allow.
All right. And actually expanding off of what Councilmember Mekachak said there. I do think that, and this kind of echoes back to what Mr. Jeans was saying and, and some of his written comments as well. Which is, I think we need to look at what we're promoting versus what we are making very, very hard or untenable for people. And certainly at the lowest end, there's nothing we can do about it. Our, under SB nine, our R18 lots can be split in two. And we have to allow at least the four by 800, which seems to be about the same amount of coverage that we were previously allowing for square footage for the, for the unit. So at the low end, it's, it may not be nice. It may not be what any neighbor wants in their neighborhood, but it doesn't look like we're able to stop that train. But as you move up, it is an interesting question whether we apply the same set of rules to the one acre parcel that all they get in a lot split is four 800 square foot units. Or whether it makes sense to, to have something appropriate built on the split lot. And maybe it does make sense to size up if what we're trying to accomplish is, is keeping the look and feel of a neighborhood. A bigger and more appropriate house on a one acre that's split into two half acre lots is probably better than, than throwing a couple of duplex units at 800 square feet next to it. So just putting that out there as a, a thought based on what I've been hearing today. Despite my initial make it as hard as possible, I think we do need to be sensitive to the neighborhoods we're working with at the same time. So interesting questions. Mayor Potam Alahi, you've got your hand up?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think there's a lot of different ways you can look at it. And the thing that we are, unfortunately, the legislature has tied our hands. They're saying, come up with objective standards, or you don't have a choice. So which means if you need, if you are going to maintain any control on how the city is going to develop, we have to come up with objective standards that, that unfortunately are going to be too hard on some lots and not hard enough on other lots. So, but we have to come up with objective standards. We can't because as soon as you start saying, okay, let's look at this lot and see what's right for the neighborhood and what's good for the neighborhood. You're going to get the neighbors coming in and saying, no, that's not really good for us. On the other hand, there are some places where our objective standards would meet the same resistance. I think we can make it really simple. I mean, we can look for a lot of objective standards and there's the, the tree standards, there's a fire issue, there's the natural gas issue. There's the EV car issue. But I, 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 my, my suggestion would be look at it and say, okay. But I, 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 my, my suggestion would be look at it and say, okay. Uh, the ADUs are allowed a certain square footage. Based on the zoning, if it's R one eight, you've got eight hundred foot, and if it's R one forty four, you have twelve hundred feet. That's our objective standard. And we don't need to worry about whether there's a fire issue or a tree issue or hazard issue. You put that objective standard in. Try it out for a year and next year we'll be, we'll have a chance to see how it worked out. And whether there really is some resistance on the other end where people are coming in and saying, no, no, we need to be able to build more. Or it's just the developers going, oh, sorry, Monty, so you know. We saw that nice four acre lot, but you're only letting us build twelve hundred square foot. So we're not going to go try and split it up and, you know, and we maintain our uh, standard and we maintain the city as we like it. So my, my, my pitch would be, let's, let's come up with a harder standard. Let's try it out for a year and then we'll look at it again in a year and see how things have developed. Uh, unfortunately, if, if the, and I would also pitch, I mean, I like this petition that's going on. Now, we can have a discussion on that uh, next time around. But, you know, if that petition passes, it'll give us the control back, then we can go back and say, okay, let's look at each thing case by case. But at this point, the legislature is not allowing us to do it. It's either, you, you ministerially approve everybody. Or you really come up with some objective standards that uh, limit their growth. And, and trying to come up with objective standards based on all these different things. It's not going to be that easy. Somebody's going to say, no, that's really not a good objective standard. I mean. How much soil can you, can you remove and how many? Uh, what the broad acreage in front of your house is going to be. What you can do, simple objective standard. Same uh, lot, you know, once you split it, you can only build eight hundred square foot. If it was R one eight, you can build up to twelve hundred if it's R one forty four. And we're done. You've got an objective standard that can be enforced. And uh, nobody can really challenge that. I hope uh, my analysis is correct. Uh, Mr. Rudin on that, you can. Clarify it if I'm not correct on trying to come up with a really simple objective standard that works for us.
Now, I, I, I think you've hit the policy question on the head. Um, and it's not an easy one.
Your, your answer is if he set it up like the objective standard as I presented it, that would work for us.
Yes, yes, I think, I think it would. Um, you know, any. Any size limit that the city wants to adopt, any coverage limit the city wants to adopt. Uh, you know, that you can quantify in square feet. Um, you know, is, is sufficiently objective that I think it passes SB nine muster. You just can't. You know, allow units to be less than eight hundred square feet. So every other, every other, you know, size limit you'd like to impose, I think is likely reasonable and supportable.
Yeah, so, so, so having a bigger size unit on the bigger R ones. And you know, it doesn't have to be eight hundred to twelve hundred. Maybe you guys want to move that a little bit further. Uh, but I think that would be a way to go and base it on our R one zoning and so, okay, for these zones, this is what the limits are going to be. So, thank you.
Thanks. Um, yeah, and uh, I hear what you're saying in terms of simplification and yet at the same time. Um, we do have the opportunity to have uh, strict and tough objective standards. Um, that we can apply to make this harder for people to get ministerial approval. So that they would have to come and seek site and architecture or council approval. Uh, to go beyond those objective standards if they have trouble with them. And so something like the environment, trees. Um, other restrictions that we could add, um, gas, uh, no gas piping. EV car chargers, all of those things are objective. And it's not that people can't necessarily get around them. It just means that we take away the easy ministerial approval. So. So I'm still for us having these discussions and, and finding a bunch of things that make it so that. Um, so that we stay involved, that site and architecture and the council stay involved. As opposed to having things be entirely ministerial unless they're either required to be or pretty simple. So let's um, continue to explore what those objective standards could be and whether. I think coming out of the, the guidance today, whether we uh, like what we've seen so far, whether we want staff to explore. Look to other communities uh, or come up with things on their own that may withstand muster. Regarding some of these, these subjects of, of trees, of frontage, of access, these things. Um, so uh, let's continue. Ms. Sharma, you're next on my screen.
Oh, interesting. I, I thought I, I had a couple of people ahead of me, but I just had a, a comment uh. For what Councilmember Elahi echoed, I, I completely agree with his uh, point of view. And I think the community sentiment that we've heard today, it's more about, you know. I think we want to do what is right for our community and our community members. What we don't want is. Make it easy for developers to come and completely, you know, subdivide our lots and build, you know, a ton of. Uh, houses and then just leave and, you know, leave us with uh, all of that mess. So anything that we can do. To support the community as, as B nine and as B ten is intended. And not make it super easy for developers to come and take advantage of these new laws. I think that's, that's the. Um, you know, basic guideline that I'd like to, to follow.
Right, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Turner.
Uh, yes, I, I wanted to talk a little bit about properties in Monson, Surino. That are subject to CCNRs. And I believe we have a neighborhood in Montesurino. That are, are subject to CCNRs. So SB nine does not forgive it. A homeowners association. From im- imposing restrictions or limitations on lot splits. Or housing developments through its covenants. Uh, through its CCNRs. Therefore, a homeowner association can choose to either enforce or adopt restriction in, in this regard. I think it's important to note that the city does not, uh, and, and I, I'm not really sure about this, so I need to, to ask. Uh, Mr. Rudin here. Uh, can we take any role in the enforcement of these CCNRs that may be more restrictive? Than city codes nor requiring if S and HOA to authorize or pre-approve an application? For development to the city.
I, so I agree with you that SB nine uh, does not. Supplant or replace or somehow involve CCNRs. Um, with respect to state ADU law, the legislature passed a specific law invalidating CCNRs to the extent that they. Prohibit the construction of ADUs. Legislature has not done that. At least yet with respect to SB nine projects. So. At least at present, where an uh, SB nine project would violate a single family restriction in a CCNR. Uh, the people, the other people who are party to that CCNR, which is basically a private contract. Can sue to enforce that CCNR. Um, typically the CCNRs that are recorded against development do not normally give cities a right of action. And additionally, the only way that you could enforce it would be with respect, would probably be filing a private lawsuit. So that becomes very expensive in terms of the city's involvement in enforcement of CCNRs. Um, you know, there, there, there's not a. You know, a different enforcement mechanism that I can think of. Uh, that being said, um, given this uh, CCNR issue, it's very important for our application materials. You know, to include, uh, you know, indemnification requirements of the city so that. You know, just because the city approves this pro, like uh, SB nine project, which. SB nine says the city can't legally deny if it meets the qualifications. Uh, you know, the city doesn't turn around, get sued by, you know, somebody else, you know. Um, or at least when the person who gets sued for, for the project, they have to indemnify the city from any related claims. So. Uh, yes, it's not, it, it's, it's not a clean issue. Um, as far as I can tell, and I'm sure that there will be some future legislation to address this.
Thanks. And that actually brings up a subject that um, I think. As Turner and I have discussed before, I'm not sure if the council has discussed it before relating to this issue of CCNRs. Um, and that is whether the city, um, and, and actually Mr. Rudin just brought this up as well. Uh, we can make it clear when somebody brings one of these ministerial actions across the counter. Um, to point out to them that uh, they have a responsibility to check their CCNRs. Uh, and to determine whether uh, this may be restricted under. The various CCNRs, because many of our subdivisions were created with surviving CCNRs, rather unusual subdivisions. Uh, usually many of these CCNRs go away after a subdivision is complete or after a certain number of years. I know about these because uh, the Blanchard subdivision. Um, that involves the First Baptist Church is right behind my house. Uh, so I'm familiar with theirs as well as the ones for mine, which is the. The Billy Jones Railroad area there, Dorado, Carroll Court. Um, and similar. So uh, these CCNRs, if not enforced, may become problematic. Uh, but can be enforced by the neighbors and it sounds like they're still active. We may want to create a bank of CCNRs that the city would have available to neighbors and developers. Uh, where people, um, of course they're recorded with the county. But nobody's going to go and search the county for those. If the city had them handy to hand out to new residents and developers, it would probably be helpful. So we may want to look at that as we expand this process and deal with a lot of these that may violate the CCNRs. Um, but, but as Mr. Rudin says, that's not the city's uh, to enforce, but it certainly could be the cities to point out. Also, the neighbors aren't going to be aware of these uh, new constructions and ministerial approvals because. They're not going to receive notices because it's over the counter. Um, so that's another issue that uh, we need to be concerned about. Um, which leads me to a question, um, Mr. Rudin, um, or Ms. Perkins, can we notify the neighbors? When a ministerial approval is being granted so that people are aware before the trucks show up?
Yes, we could, um. Um, provide those notifications of um. A project that has been approved on, under these regulations to. Adjacent neighbors. Um, or properties within three hundred feet, which is our typical noticing radius.
Yeah, um, and actually, uh, Mr. Leon Artis and Ms. Radcliffe, uh, if you can help me make a note to uh, look at future agenda items. Uh, I, this just reminded me that I've heard complaints from people that their neighbor's ADU was under construction. Was the first time they learned that it had been approved by the city. Uh, because of these ministerial approvals. So we may want to uh, bring this up as an item for, for all permits and ADUs. As well as, as lots splits. Um, moving along, um, did we get your questions answered, um, Mr. Or comments? Okay, Mr. White.
Uh, thank you. Uh, my question is for Ms. Perkins. In the staff report. At page seven, um, it says discussion of potential local requirements. And, and we as a site and architecture commission need some guidance from. Council members in relation to a variety of topics. And my understanding. Ms. Perkins is that these are the subjects that we should be focused on tonight and, and getting some guidance and um. Opinions from the city council members about where they want to see these particular issues addressed in relationship to our objective standards. Is that, is that accurate?
Correct. These were um, sort of the, the big topics um, that staff feels can be defined in our. Um, ordinance. And so we are looking direct for direction from the council and the commissioners. Of course, other items that have come up at tonight's meeting. You know, certainly there, there's more things that can be addressed than what's just listed here.
Okay, great. Cause, I'd like to circle back to these and kind of focus on these tonight, um, so that we get some direction so we can work on this. Ten days from now, I think, when we have our meeting, December eighth. That would be my request. Thank you.
Sounds good. Um, we'll, we'll come around and do some polling and, and nods and shows of hands in a little while on the, some of these items. Um, Councilmember Lawler.
Uh, uh, yes, Commissioner White, actually, uh, still in my thunder. I was hoping that we can go through these right now and really start focusing on these. Um, clearly we need them to, we need their input. Um, it's very, very important. Um, I did have, I, I do think it's really important that we are very thoughtful about what restrictions we place. Whether it's option one, two, or three in terms of. Uh, regarding the size of housing units. I am concerned that if we're too restrictive, it might draw the attention of the state. They do have a strike force. There might be complaints. I think we have an opportunity to control really thoughtful development while still getting what we want. And so I'd like to see. A little bit more thought around how we do that, probably with a combination of square footage based on. What's, what's allowed on that lot or maybe restricting square footage, but not to the point where it's only eight hundred square feet per unit. So. I'm going to start off with that and I would, I'm hoping that we can go through these, um. Right now, thanks.
Sounds good. Um, and Ms. Lawler, why don't uh, we uh, uh, bring you in? I, you have excellent organizational skills to uh, help, help take some notes as, and uh, let's walk through this as we talk about these issues. And maybe do a little bit of polling here. Um, to see uh, about this. I guess, uh, first, uh, kind of, uh, by. Probably the biggest issue, um, by show of hands, uh, or nods. Do, uh, where, where do people stand on taking the most restrictive? Uh, just make it eight hundred square feet, smallest possible across the board. Um, we don't want to uh, go into being responsive to the lot sizes at all. Uh, do we have people who are tending towards that? Uh, or. Let's, let's try to make that the question, which is. Minimize the lot size, no exceptions, no size, um.
Yeah, I. Yeah, I, I wouldn't quite phrase it like that. I, I mean, there, there is some flexibility, but we do have a fixed size. So on R one eight, maybe it's eight hundred on the R one forty four. Maybe it's twelve hundred or maybe it's sixteen hundred. So.
Well, that's, yeah, and that's, that's a different option. And so, so what I wanted to see was whether, whether people are interested in, in that. And it's a little hard to uh, put this out without um, having a polling software, but. Um, I was looking for uh, people who are looking for the most restrictive and not interested in being responsive to lot size like you're suggesting. Um, do we have uh, people who are really uh, moving that direction? We've gotten a seat, Zedler. Um, and I'm actually tending towards that same position right now. Um, of just make it eight hundred square feet and, and nothing further. Uh, we can talk about going beyond that, um, but not ministerially. So uh, I think I saw Ms. Zedler, uh, I saw Ms. Turner nodding along, uh, was that Ms.? Uh, Mr. Mekachak, Ms. Harrington. Uh, and uh, Mr. Alahi, you're actually, uh, Mr. White's also for that. Um, Mr. Alahi, uh, Ms. Sharma, was that a, a hand for most restrictive, not interested in lot size?
Um, well, it was definitely make it, make it restrictive so that it's not appealing to developers. So I, I don't know if that, that makes sense, but I would, I would, yeah, that's my work.
Okay, um, and I, I saw Mr. Alahi wave his hand, but I think uh, Mr. Alahi, you actually were, didn't want the most restrictive. You wanted to be somewhat responsive to lot size.
This sounded like it was going to become a negotiation, so I thought I'd take that position.
Okay, um, so I think, um, I think what we've got here at the moment, um, and again, this is just guidance. Is, is a tending towards um. Most restrictive, minimum, minimize the size of what can be approved ministerially. And um, obviously, we're still open to um, what would be the alternatives to that. I think it's important that we see what the alternatives are as they've been laid out for us already. Um, but if it's appropriate to expand in a very restrictive way on the square footage. Um, so that's item number one. Um, item number two on my list and, and back to Ms. Lawler. While looking over my shoulder because she's much more organized than I am. Um, I actually had the uh, trees and environmental as an objective standard that uh, was quite interesting. Um, it's not something that is, um, is something that staff has brought to us. And so I feel a little bad about it being potentially additional work. I don't know if there's anyone out there in other cities who has. Um, anything that we could look at. Um, but it did seem that the objective standard of a certain size of trees and a, uh, the drip line of those trees. Um, and how to set it up so that we preserve the trees so long as we're still allowing the eight hundred square feet minimum. Size seemed like a fairly clear objective standard. Is that something that people are interested in seeing, um, included? Let's go with the show of hands. Okay, we've got, uh, as we come across, we've got Ms. Sharma, Ms. Harrington, uh, Ms. Zedler, Mekachak. And Turner, yep, that's a hand, Booker, Lawler, Alahi, and myself.
And I also.
Go ahead.
The town of Atherton actually has, uh. Objective standards with respect to tree protection. So we can take down. Ms. Perkins can actually take a look at that.
Okay, Atherton for uh, tree protection. Okay, um, and I know we have our, our standards for tree protection. It's really a matter of bringing it in. And I know we have our our standards for tree protection. It's really a matter of bringing it in. Ms. Ziedler, you've got your hand up.
Nope.
Okay.
I don't know.
Yeah, and I will say on the tree protection question, there there is also sort of the the policy call of where you set that trunk diameter, because if you set it very small, then you know, it is hard in a ministerial, I can imagine it will be hard in a ministerial approval process for staff to say, oh, well, at least one or two trees has to come down to allow for this eight hundred square foot unit. How do I want to prioritize? Whereas if you set a larger tree trunk size that is protected, then you know, you make that potentially issue a lot easier. So it depends, you know, how you want to set that.
Right. And and I would suggest that we, I hear what you're saying. Staff can take a look at what might be reasonable based on on what they've seen with the trees. I know we do tree permits a lot. The other would be, we do have our that's not the term we use in the ordinance, but our junk trees list of the types of trees, even though they're large, that are not necessarily protected. And that may also be something objective that we can directly point to right away about even though larger certain trees could go away if they're not in our acceptable species. But it looks like there is direction if staff can put some energy into tying tree protection to this, that would be great. Coming down my list.
Two, so that if you take a tree out, you have to put two in of a certain size.
What's that, Mr. Mekachuk?
Tree replacement. If you are forced to take a tree out, then you have to put two in of a certain size.
Oh, okay, yeah, replacement trees for any of the tree removal. Okay. Next, just randomly on my list, which we didn't really talk about, was issues related to fire protection, hillside slope, any of those issues. We have areas certainly that ingress and egress are problematic. But we don't have the official Cal Fire designation. I don't know if this is something staff has already looked at, but are we able to carve out something about the access roads, the hillsides, the fire districts, so that we can at least protect on our urban wildfire inter wild interface areas? Ms. Perkins, did you look at that? Or Mr. Rudin, do you have a sense of of how fire protection, evacuation routes, these types of things may play into our objective standards?
So as a matter of uniform state law with respect to things that are in the designated WUI or in any designated state or local high fire hazard severity zone. There's harder builder building requirements and fire home hardening requirements that apply for construction. Additionally, there are access road requirements that have to be maintained for the structure for fire protection. So those those already apply regardless of anything we add to our SB nine ordinance. I think one one thing that we did want to ensure was with respect to the lot size and configuration that there was going to be room in any flag lot for a fire access road if needed. And so that that is already in the proposed code language. That is in the agenda packet, but beyond that, I don't think we've looked at it further, given that there are comprehensive requirements in the California Fire Code.
All right, thank you. Ms. Lawler, you've got a hand up?
Yes, just to just to follow up on the fire question. So so all of the homes that are in the WUI in in our city. And those are already really hilly lots. And so the slope density formula would apply to those. So those really maybe wouldn't necessarily be economically viable, would they? I mean, is there? I mean, it it seems pretty restrictive that anybody would want to split one of those lots and build something, given given the the objective standards we already apply to those.
Yeah, you bring up an interesting question, which I was wondering about as well. And that is, I mean, we we can't restrict the split and we can't restrict below the eight hundred feet. And how does that interface with our slope density? It basically, does that override our slope density or does slope density still possibly preclude those from being split? Ms. Perkins, do you know the answer on that?
Um, so Sergio can confirm, but the hillside lots are not exempt from either the lot split or the two residential units. And the slope density formula would not be able to preclude two units of eight hundred square feet.
And that's that's my understanding as well. I will say, though, that with respect to you know, very sloped lots, I think market conditions and the reality of significant grading that may be required and engineering and site stabilization would likely make those particular lots very uninteresting for developers, given the significant cost per square foot that that would result, I would guess. So there is at least that that to consider.
All right, thank you. Ms. Ziedler, you've got a hand up?
Yeah, well, what about the caveat about public health and safety? If you're building in an erosive area with a steep slope adding extra structures or you're building where there isn't sufficient egress in a fire, that impacts public health and safety. Can can we, you know, look into all the different ways we can define problems with public health and safety?
So I I would say it would be sort of a project specific determination. So if a site were not able to meet the Fire Code standards, then I think it would be reasonable for the building official to make the determination of the you know, that the specific adverse impacts to the site. And again, that would sort of be a project specific basis. I don't think we can make an objective standard because it might, you know, the Fire Codes would be looked at by Sanаторia County Fire per lot and per project.
I I guess I I don't, I don't have the the background, but I just don't understand how it, how you could be required to approve a project with grading that's dangerous. It it seems like there ought to be percentages that are objective that we could codify. And regarding fire, I, for example, live on a dead end street. And our street dumps out on the highway nine. And, you know, in a fire, it's dangerous, especially if the fire's coming over highway nine. And it seems like there ought to be numbers or ways engineers look at it that quantify, you know, capacity based on how many people feed into a particular road. I don't have the background, but isn't that something that we can pull from, you know, civil engineers or traffic engineers to speak to safety?
Yeah, and I I think unfortunately, that question's one for the city engineer. I will say that basically in order to deny a qualifying SB nine project that needs or objective standards, you have to make a determination that their project would have a specific adverse impact. Meaning, you know, a significant quantifiable, unavoidable impact based on an objective written public health or safety standard or policy that's already been adopted by the city. And there has to be no feasible method to satisfactory mitigate or avoid that impact. So, you know, with respect to things like grading, if if you can make the grading sufficiently safe using modern civil engineering techniques such as retaining walls. You know, that would not itself necessary, like the amount of grading would not necessarily be sufficient. But if the site slope was such, you couldn't actually build a safe retaining wall. You know, in the judgment of the city engineer as a, you know, licensed licensed engineering professional. I I think likely the city engineer and the building official could deny that type of project. But again, it's going to be one of those things that's a case by case project by project determination based on exactly what that site is and what the danger is that it might pose. So I think it would be very hard to say, well, you can't have a project that, you know, exceeds a thousand square feet of grading or something like that. Because that's not, you know, there are projects in the city that routinely exceed that, so.
Can you see the the fire in the roads also? Because, I mean, just from a common sense perspective, a bottleneck's a bottleneck. And when you have more people feeding into that bottleneck in a fire, it's a safety concern. The the trick is in how you quantify the the problem of flow with the bottleneck. And that's, I guess, something for an engineer.
Yeah, and I I just to expand on that, it sounds like, I mean, that certainly is a concern I have as well in terms of the the narrow streets up into the hills. Is there something, and and maybe Ms. Perkins, Mr. Leonardis, Mr. Rudin can take this back to our city engineer? Are there some standards that talk about how many people live at the end of certain sized roads? And if if roads would need to be expanded, if we double or triple or quadruple the number of people that are that are up those roads, would that be a health and safety basis that objectively we could carve those out or or put something in writing? Ms. Turner's waving her hand. She may have some information on that.
Yes, I know that some cities actually have, Liverpool, California has has a site where you can go in to determine what parts of your cities are in very high fire danger. So I think we should have that at City Hall. And and the other thing too is for 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 streets and cul-de-sacs. They have put in that they have to be at least twelve feet width. Allowed for fire trucks to come in and out. And that also includes the flag lots. So I don't think this is against SB nine, but it helps cities to to essentially look at fire and safety.
Yeah, so let's let's make sure that this gets back to our city engineer to to take a look at the fire and ingress egress evacuation routes as we take this forward to see if there are objective things that can help with our hillsides, because that certainly is an area of concern. Council, Mayor Protem Alahi.
Thank you. Yeah, I I think the legislature has given us an opportunity to kind of look at our zoning codes and our building codes. I mean, this is not just about making sure SB nine doesn't wreck us. This is about coming up with objective standards that help us build a better city and develop a better housing environment and better safer houses and protect against, you know, fire zones and against ingress and egress. So I would encourage our planning manager, Diane Perkins, to take take a look at it holistically and say, okay, what do we need to do so we can put in place requirements that help us across the board and not just people who are trying to spread lots, but just generally as, you know, somebody who comes in and wants to build a house. As to what we can do to make sure that they end up with a safe house and this and the city maintains its character. So in a way, this is a silver lining on this like cloud here, which is helping us. And that's what we're looking at now, which suggests we look at it that way.
All right, thank you. Okay, moving down my list, the next I had was the prohibition on gas appliances as a possibility that Councilmember Alahi had brought up. That is something that certainly our existing residents didn't want us to make the changes on. But with the lot split and the SB nine properties, we're talking about a much newer and different, more modern style. Are we interested in using those as an example where we do prohibit the use of natural gas? Certainly something we could consider. Do we have, let's go ahead and take a poll of people. Whether that's something that you want to explore or you don't want to explore as an objective requirement for these lot splits.
Yeah, I think it's going to be coming up anyway because of the environmental rules are coming up. And you're just imposing it on new lots and new houses and not an existing houses and not an existing ADUs. Yeah, so that's that's
Not taking any anything away from anybody who has it, not making it impossible, just simply imposing it on the new ones. A hand up or is that a, yes?
No, it's a hand up. You know, as it stands, we we're already requiring new builds to wire for electric. So in other words, you can still have gas appliances, but you must wire for electric as well. So I I I sort of think that that's already in our codes.
Well, and it's it's the prohibition on on putting the gas in that was was floated as an idea here. So by show of hands, yes, to prohibiting gas in the new builds. We've got one from Mr. Mekachuk, one from Mr. Alahi. And I'm tentative on that one. I love my natural gas and and here everybody who wants to keep it. On the other hand, I do know it's the wave of the future. So it looks like it's it's about mixed vag on that. If that's something that you can look at staff and site and architecture, look at that as a consideration and what it might look like if it was to be brought in, then we can take that into consideration. Also, if site and architecture wants to weigh in on that after you think about it some more, council's always interested in your input. Okay, EV car chargers was next on my list and that would be, let me go ahead and phrase it as one per parking space. Was, I think, what Mr. Mekachuk would like to see. Do we have support for requiring on the new builds the one per onsite parking space for electric vehicle charging? A show of hands, we've got Harrington, Mekachuk, Ziedler, Booker, Alahi, myself. So it sounds like including that one per parking space on the SB nine splits probably makes sense. That's also probably the wave of the future and probably going to be coming down from the state anyway. So.
And the city code does have it for new one and two family dwellings and townhouses with attached private garages. So I think this is something that we do already require, just clarifying that it does apply to SB nine projects with all of that being necessary.
Yeah, okay. So just I noticed that a few chat bubbles have popped up. I just want to let members of the public who are using the chat know that we're not monitoring the comments in the chat boxes. The chat is really for reporting technical difficulties. If you want to continue to make your comments, just be aware that we're not monitoring it. We're not going to be paying attention or creating a record of it. But you're welcome to bring your concerns to site and architecture next time they held their meetings. Council, when we hold our meetings, we're certainly not acting unilaterally here. We're trying to have a study session, reach a consensus for gathering information. Then we're going to have more public input and ultimately reach decisions through the public process. So moving down to the next area that I have on my list. It's a combination. Maybe it's the same thing. Maybe it's not a frontage and access. I think I we've we've had some discussion about that. I haven't really heard anything that necessarily makes for a good question. I don't know, Ms. Lawler, if you have some comments or thoughts about how we might pull for flag lots and frontages and accesses?
Well, I think I know, well, my only thought was really was it it was brought up that you need a minimum amount of space, right? For ingress and egress, particularly for fire. So I think flag lots are, I mean, we're not allowed to have flag lots anymore. So this is a sticky wicket, I think, for 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 this because fire, fire, fire stations, firefighters don't like them. They can't turn their their equipment around.
Yeah, I think, and that leads to an interesting question again about kind of promoting the SB nine concept. And how far we we might be willing to change the character of Monte Sereno and the fact that we've we've made a Um, and how far we, we might be willing to change the character of Monte Serrino and the fact that we've, we've made a real effort to avoid flag lots um wherever possible. So this is something where um I think we're gonna need to consider further. Do we uh, do we want to be practical about allowing people to construct where they may have the space behind? They might be able to do the lot split behind. Do we want to make that convenient for them? Or do we want to, to really restrict um the possible splits to where the frontage is such that uh, that the parking and the access can really be both from the front? I, I don't have an easy answer to that either. So I guess the question for site and architecture is to, to help weigh in on that as what site and architecture is thinking about that with, with your experience with the lots, the flag lots you've dealt with. Um, and also the practicalities. And then what language would look like? Um, I think we may, we've seen some language already in the draft here about frontages and access um to something we can look at. What are the possibilities for tightening it up? And then ultimately, what's the decision about the, the direction we want to go? All right, uh Ms. Lawler, I have reached the end of my list of uh identifiable objective items. Did you have any more on yours?
Uh, not, no, not really. I wanted to, obviously, I, I really wanted to address the square footage of, of units on these lots, but I think since we've already decided to go with, with the most restrictive option, then that is something that can be revisited. Um, you know, my suggestion would have been to, when you'd split a lot, you obviously reduce the size of the square footage per per lot that you can build on. Um, I did want to, you know, we talked about the uh, the frontage. Uh, there was something about the parcel configuration. How realistic is that in terms of making them uh at right angles to the street or kind of as a, as a radial, if it's a, if it's a cul-de-sac? Uh, is that something that would be difficult to um require or will we be able to manage?
Yeah, I think one, one of the things that I'm interested in seeing, um and I think, I think we heard this a little bit, would be to to show us some visuals of what some of the possibilities would look like uh by taking a uh random sample from real life um and looking at it. Take a look at what Poppy looks like um there across from the school uh with the R one eight lots and say, you know, what, what would happen? Um, what are some of the possible lot splits that would occur on, on that type of street? When we look at the uh, the um half acre lots, what does that look like? Um, do we have any very unusual lots in the city that might still be problematic, some corners or some, some little pie shaped lots? And then what does it look like when we get down on Twin Creeks, when we get into other areas where we're looking at the, the one acre lots? Uh, what are some of the real life situations we might be looking at and some of the challenges there? I think we might want to see some visuals on that. Um, and if site and architecture can help develop some of those so that when we bring this back to the public, we can be showing the public what, what this means when um we look at, uh how we interpret what it is that we're doing and how that would apply to various shapes and sizes of lots. Okay, anybody else have any uh thoughts? Any um additional items of potential objective guidance? Everybody get what they need? Uh, Ms. Turner, saw you putting a hand up and?
One, I, I wanted to ask about um porches. Have we, did we ever talk about porches? Is there a minimum porch width? Yep. If the porch is street facing, for example?
Um, you're fading in and out a little bit. You um either can repeat or I can try to interpret as best I can.
Uh, I wanted to find out about uh porch width and depth. Is, is there an input, is there a minimum porch width and depth? If it's, if it's actually fit street facing? That, that would help uh the residents?
Okay, um, yeah, so, so you've, your question is about porch width and depth and, and look and feel. Um, and I think, I think related to that actually as an expansion of that topic uh brings us back around to various impervious coverages um and other structures that we may want to uh think about as we look at these split lots and, and relatively tight situations that we might be seeing on the split R one eight type of lot.
Yeah, also the, the uh exterior stairs, right? As we put in a J eighty use up, up above, can uh, are we gonna look at exterior stairs to make sure that they're not visible from public streets? Things like that. So I think those are the things we need to consider.
Okay, might be some, some additional objective things that um we can clarify or expand as we go forward. Mr. White, you've got your hand up?
Uh, yes, kind of following up on uh Ms. Turner's comments. Um, I'd like to get some direction from the council about i- if rear and side yard setbacks are four feet, do we want to ban second story structures altogether? Um, I think that's probably a good idea because we're gonna have a whole lot of complaints from people with uh something right up against their fence. And also to talk about other types of outdoor amenities. If I was building a home of eight hundred square feet, I would want to have an outdoor covered porch, so I could have an outdoor living space and expand on that eight hundred square feet. Um, if we're gonna ban those, that was something that I believe we're capable of doing. Um, I would encourage those types of prohibitions in our objective standards. Um, those are the things that I'd like some guidance on second stories and uh, and, and amenities or outdoor structures.
Yeah, let me, let me pose that to uh Mr. Rudin and Ms. Perkins. Um, i- in terms of uh SB nine, it uh and setbacks and the sixteen foot height limit, does a sixteen foot height limit effectively preclude second stories or does that effectively allow for second stories? How's that all fit together with the four foot setback? And can we have a increased setback at least if we went to second stories?
Um, short answer is uh the sixteen foot height limit is uh mirrors what the city has adopted from its AD ordinance. Functionally, um, the California Building Code requires an interior ceiling height to be at least seven and a half feet, I believe. Um, realistically, once you add in roof and or attic space as may be required, plus, you know, some minor crawl space to get you above grade, that, that sixteen foot high limit is functionally a one story limit um in almost all instances. Uh unless you're doing, you know, excavation and allowing basically a basement construction, which realistically nobody's gonna be doing if you have an eight hundred square foot limit. And um so th- the present code that was proposed and included in the packet was, you know, whenever there is a, gonna be a new building within the side yard or reed or yard setbacks for the applicable zoning district, um basically you limit the structure to sixteen feet. Um, if they're gonna be outside of the side and rear yard setbacks, in theory, they could build higher up to the maximum building height limit of the zoning district. Again, the council could just impose a sixteen foot height limit. You know, regardless of location on the lot, if that's something that the council and the commission thought were appropriate. Um, with respect to decks and balconies, um, the code currently proposes a prohibition on second floor decks and balconies um altogether. Um, certainly the, you know, there could be a, a more explicit ban added to, you know, cover, covered porches and things of that nature, covered walkways, i- if you're concerned about structural coverage or, you know, use of those types of facilities to basically have an outdoor living space.
Yeah, I think um we need to bring back the issue of the impervious surface. Um, that was talked about earlier. If you've got a R one forty-four that's already built out and to close to the limits of impervious surface and then it's then divided, and now we're looking at the lot split, also wanting to put in a bunch of impervious surface, whether it's swimming pool, deck space, covered parking, any of those things. It seems that we shouldn't be allowing a major expansion of impervious surface. We've got to let the eight hundred square feet structures in, but we don't have to do much more than that. So um that's, seems like an area where we're gonna need to tighten that up, see what our options are and make some decisions. Okay, uh Mr. White, anything else that you're thinking about?
No, just looking for guidance on those issues. Thank you.
Uh, we really appreciate all of your work on this and uh, and the great work that Site and Architecture does.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Lawler, I see your hand up?
Yeah, just, just really quick, um, I don't know if anyone saw the article in the paper the other day about people buying lots next door to Commissioner White's point, build a swimming pool or a sport court. And I know that we discussed what the setback would be if someone decided to build a pickleball court in their backyard, or if they say, for example, they use the urban lot split and then they decided to build a pickle court or a tennis court. And I think we do have some setback restrictions. I'm assuming that those restrictions would, would override a four foot setback. Is that correct? Because I know we talked about this. I know that we, we set some sort of standard setback for like a sport court.
So our um current zoning um code requirements define a sport court of um an area that exceeds three thousand square feet. And um, we do prohibit any lighting from that.
And, and, and setbacks from the property lines?
Um, I um, so they're required to meet the standard setbacks of the zoning district.
Okay, all right.
Um, and then in the um objective design standards that we'll also be bringing to the Site and Architectural Commission on December eighth and to council on December twenty first, there are some proposed um requirements for screening. Um, landscape screening be- between a um, a sport court um or any type of a outdoor patio area and the adjacent properties.
Okay, great, thanks.
Uh, Ms. Turner?
Yes, I, I, I wanted to add uh utility screening. So if you have utilities, you, you need to be able to, to screen them off. And also if you could look at the setbacks for corner lots. Thank you.
All right, sounds like um those are some issues that we can uh certainly have uh planning pay attention to. So. Okay, anything further? Going once, going twice. Looks like uh we've got our input. Uh, really appreciate everybody's participation in the study session tonight. Nice to see you, see you all here. And uh sorry that we're doing this with so much pressure and rush, but um that's what uh they pay us the big bucks for. All right, thank you, everybody. Uh, see you all soon.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Luttrell. It was a pleasure to see all the planning commissioners in action. Thank you so much for your inputs.
Thank you.